Okay, so it's 404, so we should get started. Again, thank you so much, everyone, for joining us. My name is Ada Govan. I'm the Chair of the Maintenance and Development Committee here on the City Council. And I do want to thank Council's Click Bruce and Council President Letterman for joining us. My colleague, Council Perez sends her regards. She did want to be here. But again, thank you all for joining us. And today we are going to be talking about the Sewer and Water Commission. I initially wanted to talk about the report that was sent out. And I waited for my water bill and I wanted to see if the notification was on there. I did not see it. So I'm not sure if there's somewhere else that we have to look for it. And I know that in the notice that we got, it said that the water is safe for drinking. A few residents were concerned that there was, I guess, maybe some fine print that said that, you know, if you're pregnant or if you have underlying conditions, it might not be safe. So we just wanted to get a little bit more clarification from you guys, just what that's about, inform the public. I really always want to make sure that the public is informed and that they can have any answers to any questions that they might have. Okay, so if you want to, you could go ahead, Mr. Schimmel.
Great, thank you, counselor and counselors and President Letterman for having us again. We've been before this committee over the past couple of years in a variety of capacities on a variety of subjects. So you know, this, the issue of disinfection byproducts and our water quality violations has been ongoing now since some point in 2018. And we're glad to have the opportunity to speak to whoever wants us to speak to them. In all honesty, we've been totally transparent about what's going on and we've committed to a massive investment to rebuild our water treatment plant to address this and other issues of aging infrastructure. So you know, with that being said, I think we probably, if we can share a screen because staff here, I'd like to introduce to, by the way, if that's okay. Just take a minute. Jamie, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Jamie Bartek, Communications Manager with the Commission.
And Sue.
Sorry. I don't know why it keeps muting itself again, but I'm Sue Tower in the Laboratory Regulatory Committee with the Commission.
Elise.
Hi, I'm Elise Tronoska. I'm the Process Control Analyst for Springfield Water and Sewer.
And Katie.
Good afternoon. I'm Katie Shea, the Educational Outreach and Communication Specialist for the Commission.
Great, thank you. So we have a presentation. And it's similar to ones we have given in the past. We just continuously updated. So if Jamie could share her screen, I'll kick it off and then Jamie and the team will walk you through.
Okay, let me see. Can you all see that?
Not yet.
There we go.
Share.
There we go.
Good.
Great. So just glad to be here, as we said, and here's a great photo of what's going on up at our water treatment plant right in the foreground. You can see the first phase in our construction taking place with a crane putting the roofing panels on our brand new Clearwell, which is the first step. So next slide, Jamie. So again, you've met all of us. I think we've all been in front of some of you in one way, shape or form at some point over the years. Just real quickly, an agenda for today, we're going to talk a little bit about disinfection byproducts, the how and the why. Our current regulatory situation, which is we're in a notice of non-compliance and the water quality issues that arise from that. Our ongoing strategies of optimization and then the future improvements, which are also ongoing, which are capital planning, which the council is aware of, not only through our meetings and our public notices, but also through our budget each year that we put forth to the commission every spring, or rather to the council every spring, that kind of outlines what we're doing in the coming year. So I'm going to let Jamie take it from here and I would, I would just ask counselors, feel free to jump in. We'd rather keep this as a dialogue. So as we're going through this stuff, feel free to jump in and ask questions.
Right. Great, thank you, Josh. So I'm certainly not the scientific mind behind this, but I have been speaking about DPVs for disinfection byproducts for a few years now. So I'll go through how they form and what they are. And then definitely Sue, Elise, Josh can jump in and supplement and anything that I might be missing. But just as terms of the overall messages we want to share today. Of course, disinfection byproducts remain elevated in the distribution system as we sent out notices in the October bills. But, and so people were definitely aware of that, but the disinfection byproducts are trending down over the past several months. So that is a good news right now. But we have, what we have learned over the past three years is that our disinfection byproduct levels really correlate with weather patterns. And as we experience more extreme weather patterns, particularly very large precipitation events, sudden precipitation events, that impacts the composition of our raw water quality in Cobble Mountain Reservoir, which is increasing something we call our organics, or it's abbreviated as NOM on this slide, but that is really what is driving the issue at the end of the day. The health effects and the risks associated with disinfection byproducts are about duration and the potential health risks really come into play after decades or a lifetime of consumption at elevated levels. I know this does certainly seem like a long time to be receiving these notices over the past years, but it's really important to understand that disinfection byproducts, the health risks are really over very long-term exposures. So some of the solutions too, that we want to keep you updated on always, we are constantly optimizing our system in order to keep the formation of disinfection byproducts to an absolute minimum as much as we can. And we'll talk a little bit about some of the challenges we face with that. The permanent solution at the end of the day is that we need a new drinking water treatment plant. The plant that we have today is just not designed to address the DPVs in accordance with 21st century regulations. So that new plant is currently in design. It's on schedule and underway. And we'll talk a little bit about that, but those are the main points we're going to touch on this, this afternoon.
And you know, Jamie, I'll just, I'll throw something in there and it may be in the slide deck later, but both of our treatment plants from 1909 and the newer one is from 1974. Disinfection byproducts weren't even in the discussion when either one of those plants were built. So this isn't the, the regulations that govern disinfection byproducts have come along as a newer regulation compared to our technology that we have built.
Correct. Great. So just as a reminder, or for those of you who don't know how disinfection byproducts are formed. It all starts up at the reservoir, a beautiful Cobble Mountain Reservoir, where you have 14,000 acres of forest land that actually is really good thing because it protects water quality. But organic matter that runs from the forest into the water, and this is natural organic matter that you would find in any stream, any lake, any reservoir. It's naturally occurring. When that interacts with chlorine, which we add to the water to disinfect it from waterborne pathogens, that forms disinfection byproducts. Now, we can filter a lot of those organics out through our treatment plant. But when we have elevated organics, particularly after large precipitation events, our filters aren't designed and aren't capable, rather, of removing all of the organics. So there's always some, a little bit left that goes through and ends up in, in the distribution system. When those organics are elevated up in the reservoir, there's more that ends up in the distribution system to interact with chlorine. And that's when we get the elevated disinfection byproducts. So when I talk about natural organic matter or organics, the pictures on the right are really what we're talking about. It's, it's water that's running off the forest floors, over rotting leaves, decaying mushrooms, things like that. That's organics. And that ends, it enters the reservoir in the form of runoff. And as Josh already mentioned, disinfection byproducts, I don't think they were even discovered until the eighties. And the first regulations associated with them were implemented in 1999 nationally. And then the regulations were again updated to be a bit more stringent in 2012. The plant that we are, the filters particularly that we rely on at West Parish Filters Water Treatment Plant in Westfield, they range in age from 1909 to 1974. But obviously in the 1970s, when the plant was designed and built, disinfection byproducts weren't even discovered. The regulatory limits associated with disinfection byproducts are 60 parts per billion, and that's for HAA5 or haloic acids and 80 parts per billion for TTHMs. These are two different types of disinfection byproducts. And that the way that they're reported when we sample for them is we calculate a 12, excuse me, a 12-month average at each location that we sample for disinfection byproducts. So that means when we take a sample, we average it with the previous year's samples and we take samples every quarter, average it. And that's what's reported to DEP. We also really should emphasize too, that I mentioned that chlorine interacts with the organics to form disinfection byproducts. So the natural next thought might be, well, why don't you just reduce the chlorine? But we never want to do that. A lot of drinking water is balancing competing interests and competing regulations. And every, the World Health Organization, CDC, every public health agency always states and does state, including DEP, that you never want to sacrifice disinfection because of the short-term acute health risks that are associated with it in order to satisfy disinfection byproducts, which again have a long-term potential health risk. So we're constantly doing that. And when you have more organics in the water, you have to increase the chlorine because there's more potential bacteria. So that's what we're dealing with here. It's, it's not a, we don't just put the same amount of chlorine in every single day. It's, we're constantly monitoring it and adjusting it according to the raw water quality. And I already mentioned that the DPPs are associated with long-term lifetime of consumption. So back up at the treatment plant in Westfield. I'll just go over the treatment process really quickly because there are just a two, couple of steps in this that are important to understanding what's going on. So I already mentioned the raw water from Cobble Mountain Reservoir. It goes through a coagulation and flocculation process. This is where coagulants are added to bind, to dissolve things in the water, such as organics to, that's the first step of taking them out. And then there's two filtration processes at, or two filtration trains rather, at the treatment plant. We have a rapid sand filtration plant and those were filters that were built in 1974. And we tend to rely on those mostly. And then we have slow sand filters. And these are basically large underground caverns that are filled with sand. And they were built all over New England. They're very, you know, they worked really well for a long time, but they are not as effective at removing organics as the rapid sand filters. So those are key points to remember as we talk about this. So the water either goes through the rapid sand or the slow sands and we tend to use more slow sands in the summer when we have to meet more demand. We tend not to use as many slow sands during winter when the demand is less. It then goes through corrosion control and chlorination process before it is sent out into the city. So what are some of the challenges, aside from the extreme weather patterns that I already mentioned? There are a few other things that are contributing to the situation as well. So we first started experiencing this in 2018. That was, you know, several years ago now, but we did have a very rainy fall. And then we, we did our first sampling for DBPs or the fourth quarter sampling rather in December. That's when we first notified the public of the elevated disinfection byproducts. Then over the course of the following years, we actually, it got pretty dry in 2020. And we did have a few quarters there where we didn't have to report because we were below the regulatory limit. Again, this just is emphasizing that it follows, DPVs are really correlated with precipitation. And then we had last summer, which was the worst summer ever because it rained the entire month of July. And I'm sure ruined a lot of vacations, including mine. We then got that huge spike in rainfall and then we had a couple of hurricanes towards the end of the summer. And again, we had the organics were very elevated in the reservoir. So it's been a little bit drier this year, but the impacts are persisting and we still have elevated organics in the reservoir. And that is just in, in large part due to that we have a very large reservoir that holds a lot of water. So it's all still in there. And again, I've mentioned, we have to increase demand as the organics are elevated. And then just a couple of other points too, this past year, we had two rapid sand filter beds out of six needed to be taken offline for emergency repairs in January. So that meant we had to rely a little bit more on the slow sand filters, even during months normally when we don't. And as I mentioned, slow sand filters don't remove as many organics as the rapid sands. So we did have more elevated infection byproducts due to that situation. It did not affect this latest round of sampling or this latest quarter results because we finished the emergency repairs in August. And all the rapid sand filters are now back online and were in September when we did the latest sampling. But earlier in the year, that was a contributing factor.
And I'll just add, Jamie, historically on that note, that we've always seen increases in organics as a result of certain types of storms. And I will say, going back historically, like Hurricane Irene, and I can't even remember how long ago it was, but you know, we saw elevated organics at the reservoir for over a year after that event, right? But it was usually hurricanes. It was large multi-day events that would impact the raw water quality for long periods of time and have an effect. But what we see now is just the size and the shape of how newer storms are hitting us, that their shorter duration and higher intensity, that is impacting the watershed differently and that's impacting the reservoir differently. So we see this flush of organics that we've really never seen before. We're seeing that now really in the past five years and we're doing more sampling than we ever have. So we're looking at it closer, but we are seeing impacts and differences in how storms are hitting our system.
Anything made, Jamie, I'm sorry, excuse me. I'm not sure how much more of the presentation you have. But um, to me anyways, it just sounds, this is a lot of technical information. So I'm going to try to break it down a little bit. So what you're saying and what I'm hearing is that, so we do have a new water treatment plant coming. When is that going to be completed? Do you know? I know you said it's on schedule.
Yes, the completion is expected in 2027. It's currently in design right now. And its construction is expected in 2024. But I will also point out that we began planning this new treatment plant and the new, all the new processes. We knew this was a risk of our plant, just the age of the plant. And we started planning for this in 2015 before we had these issues.
Right, right. Okay.
We put online in a couple of years. It's a very complicated process.
And it seems like it. And, and I commend you all, you know, for doing this work. I know it's hard work. So then basically what you're saying is that the weather is impacting the water quality, basically. You guys are doing the best that, it sounds like the best you can with what infrastructure you do have to maintain it and to keep it safe. However, the, the aging system that you referenced earlier is impacting all of that. Is that what I'm understanding?
Correct.
Okay, great.
Good, counselor.
So I broke it down a little bit. So, so great. Now, at this time, I do want to ask if any counselors or actually if any of me people might want to interject and ask any questions. Because I wanted you to, if you can finish. If not, that's okay. Okay. So go ahead, Jamie. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. One more thing. I apologize. So I, you did say the October bills. In October, actually, a lot of people reached out to me about their October bills, not because there wasn't a notice in them or that there was, but because the bill, it seemed like it was like almost $200 more than what they had previously used. And what they'd said is, they called, of course, the Water Commission and asked and they were told, you know, maybe there was a water leak or something. So they had it checked out. There was no water leak. And then they said, I guess there was something in the October bill. The next month it would be significantly less. Do you know anything about that or is anyone here that can speak to that?
I will say that we did have a very dry summer. And I've been here enough years now that I've noticed, particularly in October bills, because those are reflecting, it depends on the billing cycle because we don't collect all the meter reads all the same day. It staggered. So some of those bills might have been reflecting mid-August into mid-September, when people might have been watering or just using more water. And we do see that every, particularly after dry summers. I'll say last fall, we had much, much less calls about things like that because it was a very wet summer and people just aren't outside using the water. So that might have been one trend.
Okay. So maybe then at another meeting, we can talk specifically about that. And I can, you know, ask the community if they want to come in and talk about that and ask those questions. But thank you very much.
Should I keep going?
Yes, please.
Um, where am I? So this is rainfall. This chart shows the, again, the pattern of rainfall and organics. The red line is the organics level in the reservoir and this chart goes back to the beginning of 2018. So I'll just point out three areas very quickly. So we see those spikes to the left of the screen in 2018 where we had a lot of precipitation. And then we see the red line go way above average. That's the dotted black line in terms of how much organics. And you can see there's a couple of months lag to that. Then if you look over in the middle of the chart, the organics start to go back down. Then we're in 2020. It's very dry. We had a few good quarters and we didn't have any exceedances. And then we had last summer and you see that big blue line again, very, very wet July. And then in the corresponding months, you see the spikes in organics. I'll also point out that that last red spike, it's probably hard to see here, but during the winter as well, we can see spikes in our organics because that's when we have turnover in the reservoir. And so the, I don't want to get too scientific because I'm out of my league a little bit, but the top layer basically moves to the bottom layer and that tends to, to mix the column over organics throughout a uniform in the, in the reservoir. So that's what we are seeing there as well. And then you'll see them, they are trending downwards. And this just shows the regulatory, our, our DPP averages, the HAA5 and the THM in relation to the organics and 60 parts per billion is the HAA5 regulatory limit. So that's two, three lines up and then 80 is TTHMs. And again, you can see correlation with increased organics. We have the exceedances that occur. So what are we doing to address this? There's a lot going on. We've been doing this for three years. We've tried many things. But at the end of the day, the plant just isn't designed to respond to 21st century disinfection byproduct regulations. But also it's just an old plant and it needs to be renewed anyway. So we have, are constantly looking at our chlorine dosing daily. And that is to make sure we're optimizing it, not putting any more chlorine than we have to, but also making it a safe disinfection. We are doing system flushing throughout the city and this is because this brings fresh water to the distribution system and for HAA5s in particular, the less time that the organics have to sit with the chlorine and form, the better. So that can help reduce the amount of disinfection byproducts in the water. We're working on making our coagulants as effective as possible. So we've tried a different, we've done some trials of different types to make sure that we're removing as much organics prior to filtration as we can. And we're constantly looking at the organics and adjusting accordingly. And again, we're trying to maximize rapid sand filters because they are better at removing organics. But this, this year in particular, between January and August, that just wasn't possible due to the malfunction. And as Josh already mentioned, we're doing a lot more detailed source water sampling up in our reservoir, taking samples at different depths, regular transects of the reservoir. So we have a better idea of the composition. And that's really just trying to get ahead of things and understanding what's coming in. So I mentioned the new West Parish Filters Water Treatment Plant. There is two phases to this and one of them is already under construction and another, as I've mentioned, is in the design phase. So the first is the Clearwell and Backwash Pump Station Project. That's actually in three-dimensional construction right now. It is underway and should be completed next year. And the Clearwell is the first phase of this new treatment plant. A Clearwell basically is a giant tank that's needed to clean the filters. Let's put it that way. And when we build a new treatment plant, we're going to need that, that new Clearwell to work on these new filters or clean these new filters. And also it's a more redundant system. Right now we have one that's a converted slow sand filter from 1909. And that's all we have. If it breaks, we got nothing. So this is a redundant infrastructure project that we, is really needed and that should be done next year. Phase two is the rest of the plant. And what we've discovered through bench and then pilot testing is that we need a new process before filtration to get more natural, get more organics out. It's called dissolved air flotation. It's basically the opposite of filtration where when water goes through a filter, it trickles down through the sand and the anthracite. Dissolved air flotation is bubbles floating up through the water and then you scrape off the organics at the top. So that's a new treatment process that's going to remove more organics and resolve the disinfection byproduct issue. The design schedule right now, currently under design, we are on an accelerated schedule and that's because we were able to secure federal WIFIA. It's an EPA program financing, very competitive, very hard to get. And so we're really proud of bringing that home for Springfield. We know that that's really enabling us instead of doing this plants in bits, fits and starts based on patching together funding. We're able to do it all at once. So we'll be able to get this to everybody, deliver to everyone faster. And also the plant will have new rapid sand filters as well, which the Clearwell will support. And here's just some pictures to show you the progress. In the upper left is back in April, we removed, we had some more slow sand filters from 1909 that were no longer in use. And we demolished those and actually ground up all the concrete and use them again on site for fill. So we were able to kind of reuse some of that material, which was a good news story. Then in August, we had started having some three-dimensional construction. And there you can see it, two pictures at the bottom from October, it even has a roof now. So it's moving along very quickly and we're really excited about that. And then this is just a rendering. It might not look like this at the end, but it just shows you that we are working on the design phase now. And this is just one rendering of what it could end up looking like up in Westfield and it'll be really exciting when we finally see that in person. So that's the formal presentation and we can open it up for questions. Josh, if you have anything to add.
Yeah, you know, I mean, what I would add is that there's a lot of balls in the air. So we're probably going to be starting, the, the construction phase includes demolition of what you can see in the background over there, some of the older sand filters towards the top of your screen there. So in order to accelerate the project, we're going to be doing, we're not going to just do the project all at once and wait till design of the whole thing is complete. We have different packages of construction and demolition that are going to take place between now and completion in 2027. So that way we can get started on some of the stuff that isn't on the critical path for getting this thing done. One of the biggest drivers, not only to be in compliance with this, is also the federal loan that we're working with, has a sunset for access to the money. And it was a 250 or $249 million loan with a $250 million match. So really accelerating what we would typically look at a 20 to 25-year capital program into a five-year window and saving money while doing that and then bringing us into a compliance with better water quality in that period. So we're, we're moving full speed ahead as quickly as we can. And I'll just add that when we started this project out with our WIFIA program and piecing all this together, COVID wasn't, COVID was not here. So you know, we've been pushing through all of this. I think we signed, we signed our WIFIA loan in October of 2019.
No.
2020.
WIFIA loan, it was official last 2021.
We started the application process. Yeah. So you know, we, we've been in this since before COVID and now, you know, we're coming out of COVID clearly. But there's still a lot of complications, but we are, we're full speed ahead with everything that we can be.
Great. So when you hear, when I hear 2027, it sounds like it's a long way off. So the contaminants that are there, are they going to continue to get worse? And could we expect to possibly not be able to drink the water or have to boil it before, you know, the plant is completed or you don't have the answer for that?
Well, I think, you know, in terms of what are, we do not anticipate anything like that, right? I will clearly convey to you and as we have, I anticipate I, I will clearly convey to you and as we have, I anticipate you're going to continue to get the notices. Because we, we have limitations with the technology we, we have at our two plants to treat organic matter. And we're very much dependent on things that we have no control over, which is weather and the environment. So, um, if we have long spells of, of dry weather, um, that presents its own issues, but we generally see organics going down and that's a good thing. Based on the fact that compliance is measured in a, a running average, annual running average, you're going to be getting notices for at least the next two quarters. And in all likelihood, you'll be getting notices until this plant is built because we're at the mercy of mother nature. Um, and so, so I think that's realistic to say, we're not going to be in compliance for any lengthy period of time until we have a new plant. So if you start there, but the, the, I don't anticipate that the organics are going to get so bad, uh, that it's going to be, you're never going to have to not drink the water because of this, because it's, it's the exposure, the probability of it having any effects on a limited number of people, not the general population, but on a limited number of compromised people is exposure over decades or a lifetime. And we're going to be less than a decade. So, um, so I, you know, I don't, I don't have a great deal of concern and I don't mean that to be flippant. I just realistically, um, we're going to have a new plant here. We're under construction, we're committed, we have almost all of the month, we had all of the money in place. I think inflation has probably eroded our money and we're working on figuring that piece out. But we're not deterred from continuing to build this as we, uh, as we have said. So, uh, you'll continue to get notices of non-compliance. I don't anticipate any of this is going to, any of this matter is going to result in a boil water or do not drink, um, issue. That's, that's not on the horizon.
Okay. Okay. So to break it down again, um, so what you're saying is because it hasn't been, it's only been less, it's been less than 10 years that this, um, contamination has been increasing. So, um, those aren't long-term effects necessarily. So, you know, people could feel safe, um, in, in drinking it so far. And then by twenty twenty seven, we'll have a new plant, which will hopefully eradicate the contamination and we won't have to worry about it. Um, thank you so much for that. So I guess my, another question I have is regarding the bills, right? So this is going to cost a lot of money, obviously. Um, I'm, is any of that cost going to be passed, um, on to the consumer?
All of it. There is.
All of it.
All of it. Yeah, we don't, uh, yeah, we don't beat around the bushes at, at that. Whatever we can hunt up and kill, we get to keep, right? So, uh, the with the alone that we got, the two hundred and forty nine million dollar with the alone was something that we chased and competed for and got. We utilize the state revolving fund, uh, which is also a competitive program, uh, of loans, um, for to, for our match for another two hundred and fifty million dollars. And we don't, unlike, um, municipalities in the city of Springfield, we don't receive state aid. Right? Most municipalities, almost half of their budget comes from state aid. We don't get any state aid in any way, shape or form. Our, our budgets are purely made up of the revenue we generate from bills. And that's, that is the water utility business. So we pursue every avenue we can to get loans, low interest loans, flexible loans, grants, which still are not here. Uh, we've worked with our legislators to try to get line items in the state ARPA and state forward bill and haven't been able to successfully do that, but we continue to try. So what I can say is that if it's out there, we chase it. We haven't had a ton of success of getting large scale grants, which is what we really need. So we can, uh, kind of temper the pass through costs to our customers. We are extremely sensitive to rates and affordability. Um, it is the biggest driver in everything we do. Everything costs a lot of money, as you guys know, whether it's, you, you know, everything costs a lot right now, including construction. I think when we started this program, our water treatment plant was in the one sixty, one seventy range. We're, we're now over three hundred or right about three hundred million dollars. And so, um, in general, each year when we budget, we are looking at three, five, 10 and 20 year rate structures and all of the work that is scheduled out for us. So we're not, we don't look, none of this is looking at this year or next year or even the next year. Uh, when we look at affordability and rates, it's three, five, 10, fifteen, 20. And how much work do we have to do? And what do we project it's going to cost, which is somewhat of a crystal ball. But we are, we are not focused on next year or the year after, because you can't be. The infrastructure that we're committed to building here to come into compliance and serve the community for the next fifty years, the next hundred years is not a one, two or three year decision. These are, these are decisions that, um, were, they're generational investment. It's generational decisions, uh, that we're making here. So we're just very, very careful, um, very careful about everything we do here. Um, and I'll just say it's very complicated as, as everything is nowadays.
Okay. And that, and, um, of course I'm, I'm very concerned about the rates going up because as you just mentioned, everything is going up except for people's income. And that's going to be a problem in the future. It's a problem now, um, but I'm going to allow, um, council president, you have your hand up, please.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, and I appreciate, uh, your continuing the oversight, uh, that this committee and the H H S committee have, been conducting on this issue since it first came forward in, in two thousand and eighteen, uh, when I was chair. Uh, I also want to thank Josh and his team, uh, for your continued willingness, uh, to, you know, meet with us, to answer questions and keep us apprised on your status. I guess I have about three questions, um, that I'd like to go over before we end today. The first being, uh, more on the, the technical end. We know that the violations are run on a location, on a, a locational annual average, right? A running average. What's our trend here in terms of the data on how many locations and how often we are actually, um, exceeding the standard? How often water and sewer is actually exceeding the standard? And, and, and how does that relate to the kind of annual average? Does that make sense? In other words, I know there's been, there's been reports where we have to notice, water and sewer has to notice. But in fact, if you review all the numbers, there's been the instances where it is still below, uh, where it should be. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, it, it does. And I'll, I'll do the best I can to answer that. So it's a L A R R, so it's a locational annual running average. So it's by location. So say we have, and Sue could answer this, but, uh, let's just say we have 10 locations where we do sampling. If any one of those locations is in violation, you have to public notice the entire city. So, but the data that is, uh, the data that is out there and accessible to the public will show you where the locations are and how many. I think right now we're, we're, I think we're, all of them or almost all locations were in, uh, violation in the L R A A or L A R R. Jamie's correcting me. So, yeah, I, I think, you know, we just, it ebbs and flows, um, Mr. President. So, um, I think we can certainly give you the data. I think it's probably available on our website in all likelihood. So you can look at the, the location, right? So one location could be in compliance and another one may not be for the year. You still have to notice everybody, but it's for the year. In other words.
Yeah.
It, it, that particular reporting period, it may be in compliance, but it wouldn't.
Correct.
It's still in violation because of the previous measurement. Right. Because it's a, a, a running average, right? So, I mean, honestly, and that's why when I, I spoke earlier, I said, you can anticipate for at least the next two quarters that you're going to be in violation because even if we have zero next quarter, which we won't, but if we did, and even the following quarter, you're still averaging it with the previous two that were in a violation. And so the, the running average of those four quarters of the, of the sample quarter and the three previous has to average out below, um, the, the, the number.
And I think, you know, and I think, and I'm not opposed to that. I'm not, uh, not faulting the, the policy. I think, you know, the regulation is designed to trigger this response, right? I mean, we were, you know, the water sewer commission is, is where there's an issue is taking the steps to fix it. And, you know, that is, that's what the policy is for. So, so that, in, in that instance, the, the policy is doing its job. With, with that said, in previous presentations, you've been able to share some steps that you were taking in the interim, uh, prior to the, the final construction of the new plant, um, to try to lower this as much as possible. And I may have sort of, you, you, I may have missed it in your presentation tonight, but are there any sort of stopgap measures currently in place, um, that are, you know, assisting in bringing these numbers down in the interim?
Yeah, Jamie spoke to that. We, yeah, we're doing all the things that we've been doing right, right along, right? So we're, we're looking at the data on a daily basis to adjust chlorine. We're flushing, um, right? So the age of the water has something to do with this. So when you see hydrants flushing in the city, that's us trying to decrease the age of the water, bring in fresh water. And that reduces, uh, the exposure and reduces the number as well. There's a variety of different, um, you know, they're, they're cumulatively, they probably have a decent effect, right? Reducing water age, zeroing in on the minimal amount of chlorine that you can to maximize your disinfection without, without dipping below what the standard is for having chlorine in your system, right? So, uh, I think Jamie spoke to it a little bit. There's a lot of competing drivers in this, right? You have to have a minimum amount of chlorine in your system. So you have to put chlorine, but it, it, it's balancing that and trying to maintain, maintain that while you know every, every ounce of chlorine you put in is causing you a problem on the other end of it. So, uh, we are doing all of those things. Jamie, if you have anything quickly that, that I skipped over of specifics, uh, throw it out there.
Yeah, I believe also we've met, um, optimized the coagulant as well. We've kind of been, uh, did some, uh, pilot testing of different coagulants that might more of the, uh, organics prior to filtration. And we're also just trying to maximize our rapid sand filter use as much as possible. We can't always do that. But those that, those are more effective at getting more organics out, but not to the extent necessary of in the context of today's regulations.
And lastly, while I, while I have you here, a little, a little bit different, uh, well, on the same topic relative to your, um, financing of the new treatment plant. I mean, at this time, your, your capital plan has it fully funded, but that assumes certain increases in the rates. Is that accurate?
Correct.
So I wanted to ask about the state ARPA money in your conversations with the legislative delegation. If I remember correctly, I feel like when ARPA was awarded, um, both to the cities and towns and to the states, uh, a, I'm sorry, I think I lost you there for one second. When ARPA was awarded to the cities and towns and to the states, I, I, I feel that water infrastructure was one of the very specific, issues that was named. So what's been the conversation with the, um, what's been the conversation with the state legislative delegation relative to the state's ARPA funds?
Sure. So I think, I think you are aware that, um, independent agencies like I, like ours were not eligible for any direct ARPA money as it came from feds. And then when a portion of it came to, uh, the Commonwealth, we were eligible directly for that. Uh, we had several different bills in there that we worked on with legislators, uh, for five million, a couple for five million and leading up to that. And, uh, they all got pulled out, um, as, as part of the cutting that happens, uh, as they make their way through the legislation. So, um, I think we've worked really, really hard in outreach to our delegation and otherwise within, you know, the, the avenues that we can, but we have not been able to successfully get any grant money. And then that's, that's line item money. The remainder of the ARPA money from the feds and the state runs through the state S R F program, which we do have access to, which we do compete for. That's not a giveaway, that's a competitive process. We are one of the biggest users in the state, so we absolutely benefit from that program. Um, but I can tell you for certain, we need help moving forward because, uh, again, the numbers we were dealing with were pre-pandemic. We're, we're now, you know, not quite double, but might as well be double, uh, the cost of what this was projected to be. We're not, we're not wavering in any way, shape or form. We're just trying to figure out where it's going to come from. And I think collectively it would be really helpful if it didn't come from our ratepayers. And I think.
I agree.
I would like to, I'd like to offer, you know, the support of the body, uh, in, in that advocacy. Certainly with the state legislative delegation, but also, uh, with the incoming administration, members of whom I had the opportunity to be with last night. So what I'd like to do is, um, stay closely connected in that regard, uh, because I, I, I think it's sort of unacceptable for, for water and sewer in Springfield to not be able to benefit, uh, at some level uh, from the state ARPA fund. So, uh, the councillor Govan and I, we can follow up with you, um, following this meeting and just get a sense of what's already been done in legislature and then, uh, perhaps how we can provide some support, uh, from the council. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I was actually going to echo that. Um, I'm going to give, uh, Mr. Latorian opportunity. Go ahead. We can't hear you for some reason, but you're not muted. No, sorry. But I do, while he's trying to work that out, I really do echo what, uh, council president said regarding the, um, ratepayers not, um, you know, being held to this and that you all should be able to take advantage of the, um, resources that are out there. So if you, you know, need any support from us, please let us know. We will gladly, um, you know, advocate for you, um, knowing that our ratepayers, you know, the consumers aren't really, can't afford basically more expenses. Can we hear you now, Mr. Latori? No. I'm so sorry. I know you had an important question or comment.
I'll, you know, uh, Chairwoman, I, if I could just jump in until, um, the councillor, well, you, don't be afraid to jump in councillor once your audio comes in. But I'll, I'll add two quick things. One, um, just in terms of affordability, the commission has also worked really hard over the past three years to implement a lot of customer assistance programs. And also during, during the course of the pandemic, we did not do water shut offs. Um, and we're very lenient with, um, our, our payment plans. We've increased the senior, um, senior citizens discount. And we, uh, created from the ground up a new program, a customer, a cap, customer assistance program that mimics lie heap, uh, for those customers of ours that are eligible for lie heap. They also get a two hundred and, I think it's two hundred and fifty dollar credit towards their bill now as well. And we're constantly trying to, um, improve upon that. And we're also working very closely, um, with the state in the development of the lie wop program, which is similar to lie heap, but for water assistance. Um, and that's a, that's a one-time temporary thing, um, that the state is rolling out. And we're working with, um, Valley Opportunity Council on that. But then nationally, we're also very much involved in, um, a permanent lie wop program that would mimic lie heap or similarly, a similar type program that would provide, uh, permanent assistance to, uh, folks in need, uh, for water, um, for the water and wastewater bill. So we're, we're doing all of that and I, I will take to heart, and you may regret it, that there are issues that move fairly quickly from the legislative and regulatory framework where sometimes we may need a letter of support, um, on issues that will drive rates up. And, um, now that you've offered, you may be hearing from us in the short term because we have an issue that is rapidly approaching, uh, that we're, that we're working on, that has the, uh, possibility to really impact rates. So we may reach out on that.
Please, absolutely. We're here to help any way we can. And if you could send me information on those. And if you could send me information on those, um, eligible programs that might help our consumers, I would love to share them more at large, I know you share them, but I'd like to share more, more of them, because sometimes they need different ways of being, um, being reached out to, so. Mr. Latorian, are you, uh, can we hear you now?
How about now?
Yes.
It is wonderful to know that the old adage of turning something off and turning it back on still works. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Be an IT specialist.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairwoman, uh, my name is Juan Latorian, I reside at one twenty-two Forest Hills Road. Good evening, everyone. Madam Chair, if it's okay with you, I have what will be a brief comment and then a question?
Please.
Thank you, so, um, I will agree with Counselor Letterman, I really appreciate you hosting this meeting, I think it's a really important issue for our city. And I commend Springfield Water and Sewer for, uh, being here. I, I want to give a special shout out to, uh, Ms. Bartek, I'm sorry if I pronounce your name wrong. I know you were at the, um, McKnight meeting, uh, yesterday, I think you've been to at least sixteen acres, East Forest Park, Outer Belt. Um, I haven't been at all those meetings, but I think they're really important. And so I really appreciate you, um, coming into the community. As, uh, Madam Chairwoman mentioned, you know, there's just, just a lot of things going on there, out there. We're not in a Flint, Michigan water crisis situation, but it's not stopping people from saying, I need to boil my water. The city should pay for filtration for my home. I have to purchase a home filtration system. You know, um, I have, uh, it's not going to be a decade of time for me as a human, but my pet is only going to live to be ten years old and my pet's going to drink the water every day. So, um, the comments I'll make briefly are familiar to the Water and Sewer Commission, but for the benefit of the city council, uh, I think these meetings are important, but I just want to restate some suggestions I had regarding getting the message out of the work that you are doing and dispelling some of the myths that are kind of percolating, and that is monthly editorials in The Republican to share your construction status. Public access, you know, an infomercial just saying, what are you doing? This is how you can get, you know, financial aid. These are the things you need to learn about, uh, HAA five, et cetera. I mentioned the civic associations and I'm, I'm still going to give a shout out to our high schools. I think that's a huge opportunity for a large public forum to kind of get a bigger crowd of people and maybe the Ray Jordan Center. So that'll conclude my comments and then my one question, which Counselor Letterman and Counselor Govan alluded to in the past. Uh, I think as recently as last June, you've anticipated a roughly seven percent annual increase in the water rates over a number of years to help finance, um, the ongoing construction. Uh, I know we're a long way away from June, but is, is there anything that's taken place, say, in the last five months that's changed your projection on that, good, bad or indifferent at this point through the chair? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Latorian.
Sure, I, yeah, I, I think there's a lot that has changed. Our, our, obviously, uh, inflation ha- has gone out of control wildly. The construction bidding market in the public sector is very unfriendly at the moment, um, so. Uh, I mean, what I will say is it, it's our environment in the water sector and with what we do with construction and rates is constantly fluid, so it's nothing that we are, are not experienced with. Nothing that has us in a panic, because what we do is figure out how to make it work and that's just what we do. And we've been doing it for about a hundred and forty years here, so. I would say unfortunately, it's getting harder and harder to do that. I think that we're going to come up short on the money, but that, the, the real spending that money is still a couple of years away, so we have the ability to plan and try to find other avenues for funding, right? And, and we will reach out to you to support whatever that endeavor is, um, because we leave no stone unturned. And we're very sensitive to rates and when we give the rates out, we know what our rates look like for the next three and five years, we anticipate that and we, we build in inflation, but we don't build in this type of inflation and we don't build in, you know, we build in escalation to the midpoint of construction based on certain indices, but we don't build in inflation for, uh, and, and indices for a global pandemic, supply chain issues and all the things that we're experiencing across all of our lives, so. Planning for that's impossible. You should know that we do everything we can, um, to keep our rates down. But at the end of the day, it's going to cost this community more not to do this work. And I, I will say this, I say it to staff and anybody who will listen, we cannot afford to not do this work right now. We need to figure out how to do it, we need to figure out how it's not just purely on the backs of our customers. Um, and that's been a struggle, so I think you can, you can feel comfortable in the fact that you have a tireless commitment from, from us and our staff here to just that, to find out the best way to do it and do it effectively and cost-effectively. But, you know, uh, answering those questions, I don't have that answer right now, but certainly the forecast isn't what it was in, in June of last year.
Yes, and I thank you, um, I always like to make sure we're on time. But I want to thank you for coming and, and presenting and giving us this information. Josh, please reach out to us. One thing that I'm committed to, um, on the city council is to make sure that our residents have what they need. And if we need clean water, we need, you know, the infrastructure, um, upgrades that I think we all need to be making. I know that we're in the process of getting some ARPA funding and we're getting some of that infrastructure money coming from the federal government. In any way that we can help, please let us know. And on the city council, you know, if we can't advocate for lower rates at the Sewer and Water Commission, we're going to have to advocate for some sort of relief for our residents. And that's what, um, I want to do, so I want to do both, have clean water and not have as high, um, bills. All right, but thank you all so much, um, for being here. And you guys have a good rest of your week.
Okay, I would like to thank staff too, a lot, there's a lot of people behind, uh, what happens over here, so. Uh, thank you for your time and we're glad to participate anytime.
Great, thank you so much. And Counselor Allen just joined us, but we're leaving, Counselor Allen. Bye.